We can get started. We'll do the pledge at the beginning of the regular meeting and not now. So I'll call roll now. Councilmember Paul.
Here.
Councilmember Chow.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow.
Here.
Councilmember Sinks.
And I am here.
And Councilmember Willie is not here, and hopefully he'll be joining us later. So the study session is to review the city work program for fiscal year 2019 to 2020. And we have the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Tim Borden, interim city manager. And so I am going to tee it up here with a fairly short presentation. And then at the council's pleasure, we can either go one by one through the work program, or I can just turn it over to the council and we can, and you have the work program in front of you. And they can, we can go into questions or public comments. So I'll go through the quick presentation first. So, starting back in February, we had a priority setting session over at the Quinlan Center. While there, I think that the, next year, I think it was, it was a good learning experience and that I think there's, there's things that would do different next year. I think it was still a, a good change for the city in that there was a lot more public participation than in the past. And at the end of the day, despite that we would probably do the, the ranking a little bit different, I think hearing the public speak, hearing the council discussions, and then even the scoring, I think that it generally gave us what, what was the most important things and maybe things that aren't quite as important. So it was still very valuable for staff in putting together your proposed work plan that you'll be considering tonight. What happened after that, after that February priority setting session was during, since then, the departments have been working on incorporating those, those items, the higher priority items, actually, most of the items in, in that list that we talked about. And, and really pushing, pushing them into the, the current initiatives that are ongoing in the current work program. So, so folding them in, looking at, at resources, you know, if, if the top 10 things happen to be in community development, well, then there probably wouldn't be resources to do those top 10 things. But in another department, you know, number 17 may be their, their highest one, so they may be able to get to it. So it took some work just to look at, match up resources, potential schedules, how we would be able to deliver on, on some of these initiatives. And in any way, that's, that's what you have in front of you today is our, is our first shot at that. And then here we are in March, looking at the proposed work, work program. Okay? Just reviewing, as we, as we go back and look at, at the current work program that we're in, 14 items have been completed. So I think that we, we have made some, some good progress on many, many important things. You can see, I won't go one by one on the list, but those have, have been essentially completed and we can, we can push on. So 22 of the priority setting items were incorporated into the proposed work program. The things that were not included, I'll just go through this list and the reasons for those. City webpages for high-profile projects or issues. We decided we, we are currently working on that. Many of our larger projects, we are working on a consistent format. That is really more of our day-to-day work and it's ongoing now, so we didn't incorporate that as a, as a special initiative in the, in the work program. Climate Action Plan 2.0 and Climate Adaption Plan. We decided with, with the resources available, we decided we'd probably push those into, into the following year to revisit those items. Event support for Tournament of the Bands. We found that we, we have already budgeted for sheriff support for that event, so, so we have not included that. Financial, financial impacts of the CASA compact, that is being reviewed tonight as part of your study session at the beginning of the regular open agenda. There will be a study session on the CASA compact and financial impacts will be presented on that as well. Mental health initiatives, a fairly broad topic. We, we are still moving forward on many of the, the teen, uh, mental health initiatives that are ongoing. The Teen Commission is taking that on themselves as, as part of their work program. So we are not putting anything new into that. Urban villages, this being in other jurisdictions, didn't see that there was anything concrete that we could really, really have as a goal there other than, you know, vigilant reviewing of any plans or planning documents that, that are shared. And we can certainly weigh in and bring that to council for, for us to comment on those. Vacancy tax, I think that this could be an important topic, but I think that we're, I think it would be better at this point to wait and see how, how this is working in other jurisdictions that are just beginning to take it on, such as, such as Vancouver. So I think this is a wait-and-see topic and probably not at the, at the top of the list to be included this, for this coming year. Did go out and talk to all of the commissions in February about various topics, giving them a survey on how the commissions were working, getting input as far as the subcommittee. Councilmember Paul and Vice Mayor Chow are, are working on. So we presented a, a survey that also went over how commission work programs may work with the, with the council work programs. And talked to them about how, how the process, how we saw the process likely working, where they would, the, the commissions would start their work in July, working on their work program. And, and as they, they go through their agendas, if they come up with new topics that they decide that they would like to work on and perhaps would be included in the city council work plan, they put those basically in a, in a parking lot until the December timeframe, where the, at that point, their liaisons would, would bring those forward to council in the priority setting session. And those would be included as, as far as council consideration for the following year's work program. And then, once the council approves their work plan for, for the following year, then the commissions would review the council's work program, adopt many of those items that they would like to discuss and have input in on, bring that into their work program, which would be their commission work program. So that's kind of the cycle there, and we talked to all the commissions about that. What you, this year, we see is kind of a reset. There were some commissions that really had never had a work program before, so there was a lot of inconsistency. What you have tonight, before you, besides your proposed work plan, you have the prioritized Planning Commission work program, which we've had in the past. Planning Commission has been somewhat unique in that we have included their work program as an attachment during, during this session in the past. You also have something submitted, and I believe there'll be a speaker later from the Housing Commission. They have submitted their work program. But, but we have, we don't have the, the work program ideas from the other, other commissions tonight. Next year, it would be the plan that we would have all the commissions with any ideas that they have for the council to include at this point. Next steps, so after tonight, we'll, we'll be listening, talking about, about items that you would like to move up in schedule, back in schedule, potentially new items to include, and then, you know, also items that may fall off. So we'll go through that and then come back on April 2nd with, with a proposal for you to, to adopt at that point. In, in the June timeframe, we'll be adopting a, a capital improvement program, which is really our, our projects, our capital projects that will, most, most of those are not covered in the work programs, I just wanted to point that out. There's many projects that we'll be proposing at the April 30th Capital Improvement Program study session that you won't see as work program items. Those are, those are somewhat on a separate track. And then you'll also see, be seeing in June, you know, an operating budget that will incorporate the resources necessary to implement the work program that you're going to be approving. In January of next year, before the priority study session in February, we would come back to council and update you on the progress of the work program. So going, going into the priority setting session, you'd have the full update of, of where we are on all these initiatives. And, and then in Jan, also in January, we would incorporate the commission ideas consistently for the priority setting session and work program study sessions. So that's really the cycle of how we see this working in, in the future. Now we have the, the proposed work plan in front of you that, again, we're happy to take that page by page, or you, we can just open it up to either public comment or, or council questions.
Okay, so let's open it to council questions first. Anyone have questions of staff?
Do you want to take this subject by subject, or do you want to?
Right, item by item.
So I'm clear, you know, I guess you're looking for our comments, and would you prefer to have them all at the end? And questions now and comments at the end, or do you want our comments?
If there's any questions about the, the procedures, do that now. Questions about specific items, we can do after public comment.
Fine, yeah, I just, I wanted to be sure we were, we had a plan here. Thank you. I've been through this with, with staff, and so I have no further questions.
Okay. Okay, so I guess before we discuss this, we can move on if we have any public comment cards. How many do we have?
Four.
Four, okay. Okay, well, a name is not required. Okay. Okay, so first we have Connie Cunningham, followed by Shawnee Kleinhouse, followed by Dashiel Leeds. Welcome Connie.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager. Do I turn this on, or do you?
Oh, I'll reset it here.
Okay, thank you. I'm here this evening to talk on the work program. I'm sorry, I got my papers out of order. I'm Connie Cunningham. I'm a 32-year resident. I'm a bird watcher, and in the context of this particular letter, I'm also a human. I join with the Audubon Society in their request to include bird-safe design and dark sky lights-out policies for the city work program for 2019 and 2020. Dr. Shanee Kleinhouse's letter is eloquent and well-documented about creasing dangers to birds and the good things that cities are now doing and that Cupertino can also do to protect birds and humans. Notice the humans. The city has already added bird-safe design to major projects, and it would be the obvious next step, to me, to add bird-safe design as a permanent requirement in our general plan, municipal code, and all the related things. The additional dark sky lights-out request is well-documented in Dr. Kleinhouse's letter to be beneficial to both birds and humans. Birds have long served as an early warning device to humans. Think of the phrase "canary in the coal mine." Birds were literally kept in mines to warn of gas leaks. The word, the bird would become sick or die earlier than humans because it was so much smaller. Miners then had the opportunity to evacuate before the gas overwhelmed them too. Cupertino is a forward-thinking on environmental topics. We can improve our environment and promote health of our citizens by first being good to some of our smallest residents, like this little guy, the red-crowned kinglet, the chickadees, the junkos, and many, many more. I encourage you to add to the big strides that we have already made in the Cupertino environment to include this request by Shanee Kleinhouse, PhD, environmental advocate for the Santa Clara County Audubon Society. Thank you.
Thank you. So can staff look at what some other cities have done in terms of ordinance for bird-safe design?
Yes, of course. There is, there is a lot of material. We've looked at it before. And yeah, we could, you know, include that as a, as a work program item. In fact, to bring back count, code amendments potentially.
Right, and I know, like, even in Palo Alto, the public work-
I thought we were doing comments at the end?
What?
I thought we were doing our comments.
Well, I wanted to make sure that the public, since we are allowed to ask questions and direct staff, that we do it at this time.
Yeah.
So, yeah, yeah, but, but just direct staff, no, no questions from other council members right now.
I want to add that actually Shanee sent an email to all the council members.
Right, we got that.
And she included some very detailed information about bird safe and the dark sky. And she included a list of cities that already have these ordinance that would be, that would be a really big help for the staff.
Okay, all right. So next we have Shawnee Kleinhouse, followed by Dashiel Leeds, followed by Suda Kasam-Sedi.
Thank you. I'm Shanee Kleinhouse with the Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society. It looks like we're bursting into an open door, and I hope that's the case, and thank you all. You know, my friends at Audubon, they say that birds are like rock stars. They dress up and sing, and they're beautiful and entertaining. And for residents in Cupertino, we know how they value birds and nature. We've seen that again and again, most recently in the Parks Master Plan, where all the outreach shows just how important wildlife and nature is to the city. So I think our letter and Connie covered it well. I don't know that I need to repeat a lot of that, but I do hope that you'll work on an ordinance. There are a lot of examples. You won't be breaking new grounds. Not that it's bad to do that, but, you know, it's extra work. And you'll be the rock stars, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Next we have Suda, followed by John Zhao, followed by Kathy Helgerson. I'm sorry, no, we had Dashiel Leeds. Sorry.
Good evening, council members. My name is Suda Kasam-Sedi from Fine Arts Commission. I'm here to talk about few programs that we want you to consider including in your agenda today. I talked to at least 50 residents of Cupertino and 50 residents of Palo Alto, Saratoga, before I prioritized my list. Fine Arts Commission is very dedicated and determined to bring lot more art to Cupertino. We have very less budget allocated and wanted to put forward this request to allocate more budget for the following programs. First, I think all of us agree that city needs dedicated signage gifts to visitors of city hall. Second, a kickoff program inspired from a program initiated by Saratoga, which is called Paint the City, where we would hold a contest to invite the community to come up with a theme and select kids from different schools to paint not just the utility boxes, but unexpected places in Cupertino, like a wall of library, a wall of city hall, and many places that community can benefit from. Number three, our conference rooms in city hall. They're very dull right now, so hang more paintings in every room. During my conversation with the residents, lots of ideas came up, around 150 ideas. I created a Google Doc and I'll send them along to you tonight. But while Fine Arts Commission is dedicated to creating some changes, we would appreciate if we can get equal support from the council to put them into action. Yes, these might seem a bit less insignificant in the big picture of issues that we'll be talking today, but these initiatives will bring out the true essence of Cupertino and set an example to neighboring cities. Request to the audience, if you agree to whatever I said, please was your support to city council. Send them an email requesting to bring more fine arts to Cupertino. Thank you.
Question for the speaker. Hi, thanks for coming out and welcome to the commission. It seems like you're doing a great job so far. And I have a question about the first item you mentioned. You said something about signage items.
Gifts, yeah.
Is that basically, essentially gifts with the Cupertino logo or name on them?
Logo, yeah. And lots of ideas came even regards to that, like a calendar. Right now, there's nothing that we give to somebody who's visiting the city hall for the first time. Something that represents Cupertino. And while we were discussing, there was no budget allocated for that, so that's why.
Right, okay. I just wanted to clarify that. That's actually on, on my list of add-ons as well.
Awesome.
And we discussed that at the mayor's meeting with commissioners as well.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And next is Dashiel Leeds, followed by John Zhao, followed by Kathy Helgerson. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Dashiel Leeds. I'm a volunteer environmental advocate for the Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society. I'm here to speak in favor of the bird-safe design and light pollution ordinance with the lights-out program. I've talked previously to this body about the potential negative health impacts of poorly managed artificial light at night. But today I'd like to talk about the benefits of a clear night sky and what it means to me. Sometimes when I'm not feeling so well, or when I'm feeling down, I try and get away from the light and find a spot where I can look up and see the stars in the sky. And when you look up at the moon like that, when you look at the moon and the stars, you sort of realize how small you are in the scale of the cosmos, and your problems don't really seem as big anymore. There's a real peace to that, and you can, you can feel it. It's, it's amazing healing, and I think all human beings deserve access to that. And I would love to see the city of Cupertino prioritize measures that would really help the citizens of Cupertino look up and see the clear night sky. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next we have John Zhao, followed by Kathy Helgerson, followed by Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, John.
Hello, city council. I do have an item here. So this is, I'm here. My name is John Zhao. I'm the chair of the Housing Commission, here representing on behalf of the Housing Commission. And during our previous meeting, we came together to come up with a list of ideas and prioritize them, so here they are. We've broken them down from A being highest priority, B and then C being the lowest. And some of these are kind of to provide more of an opportunity for us to, as a commission, enrich our knowledge of housing policy and what options we have to try to further our goals, including building or providing more affordable housing. So some of the ones I want to highlight are, one is identifying strategies and resources for assisting the homeless. As you know, we have a significant crisis when it comes to people who are not housed, whether that's in Cupertino or throughout Santa Clara County, the whole Bay Area. And that's not uncommon for Deansha students as well. So we would be interested in exploring what are some options for perhaps a program to house Deansha students that who don't have a place to, for shelter. Another thing we're interested in is revisiting the accessory dwelling unit ordinance and looking at different factors that can try to allow for more building, like addressing barriers, whether that's parking requirements, and once again tying that in with the Deansha students. We're also interested in tracking state housing legislation such as SB 50 or any other bills that could have an effect on our city. And we are interested in addressing the below-market rates funds and exploring whether there's a way to make more use of it, whether that's pooling it with nearby cities. As an example, Stanford provides affordable housing funds to the county, and that fund can be used within a six-mile radius of the campus. So maybe we can explore some opportunities to work with our neighbors to provide more affordable housing. And additionally, we would be interested in studying speculative housing. So if there's vacant homes that are not being used to, you know, house people, the primary, you know, purpose of housing, but is being used for investments, what are ways that we can address that? And that kind of ties in with the vacancy tax that I saw on the work plan proposed. And then also exploring single-family zoning and missing middle strategies as a potential way to increase housing stock. And the others are kind of standard things.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Kathy Helgerson, followed by Jennifer Griffin.
Hello, I've got so many things that would take hours. The first thing I wanted to bring up was I feel that they might want to think about a beautification committee to beautify Cupertino. The streets need repairs, and there's painted numbers on the sidewalks indicating what has to be done, but that looks really bad. I've sent pictures to the city and they have, around my area, they have cleaned up a lot of this, except for a wall near Banley Drive that's just disgusting across from Apple, with the rebarb showing, so we need to do something there. Sidewalks need to be installed. We don't have enough sidewalks. Saving more trees. Behind my house, they cut down a beautiful tree. Cleaning the streets. I understand they're going to get a new vendor coming in to do this. Items left on the street, either free or junk for months. The city just picked up some items near some apartment buildings that I called in about. They were right out there, and they picked them up, so I'm real happy about that. Roger Lee worked real hard to just get someone out there. And there was a hole in the tar of the road, so he had that repaired also. The rebarb is showing on this wall, and I think that just looks horrible and ugly. At the end of Dunbar Drive, there was a house there, but they tore it down. I complained for years about the weeds, and they tore it down, but now we have an empty lot. I think the city council needs to implement ordinance that tells the owner in five years to either build a home or sell the property. It looks horrible. We need to do something. We need to do something. PG&E wires are sticking out of the telephone poles, that we need to do something. How about trying to figure out a way to put the wires under the ground, even though the houses are not new houses? It would really beautify the city. More meetings, workshops, stakeholder meetings. I'd like to start stakeholder meetings to talk about Lehigh and the Stevens Creek Quarry. I'm sure a lot of people are interested in that. We need to do that. I also want to suggest more City Council meetings. Why not two a week instead of two a month, or whatever you guys are doing? But I don't want them to last so long. And we need to kind of consolidate what the meetings are about. For instance, if you're going to have an award ceremony, have it all on one day. Have everybody come in, serve sandwiches, make it a big deal. And then the other time, come in and bring all the big issues into one meeting. And if there's too many, then make it on a two-day thing, where it just goes over to the next day. It's really hard for the City Council people to keep from falling asleep. And we're all watching you fall asleep here, so if you don't mind, could you please do something about that? Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Try to stay awake tonight. Next is Jennifer Griffin, followed by Janet Van Zorin.
Hello, City Council, I'm Jennifer Griffin. I think having tea sandwiches and a tea party at each City Council meeting would just be awesome. Anyway, I attended the Planning Commission meeting last night, the special one, which was to add their items to the list. And Mr. Fu did a fantastic job. I've never seen anybody add that quickly, or whatever they were doing. Anyway, I just wanted to say again that I, the Heart of the City item, which I believe is on the Planning Commission docket, that to me seems to be like an attempt to tear it down, to change it, to challenge it. And I really think that we need to remember how many people in the community have worked tireless hours to protect Heart of the City from the Cupertino-San Jose border, all the way down to Montevista, past the eighty-five bridge. It is, to me, one of the highlights of living in Cupertino. It is the shining example of what we value in Cupertino, that thirty-five-foot setback. San Jose does not seem to be honoring it, and they don't. I am very upset with what they did with raising the height over Duradon for the up to two-hundred feet. I believe that they're going to be impacting the San Jose Airport. And I really would like to have Heart of the City become something that we export to other cities. I am extremely proud of it, and I don't want other people to tear it down and tell Cupertino they can't have it. Because as far as I'm concerned, it's a hallmark of the city, and that's why we have the big trees and the thirty-five-foot setback. Urban villages, I don't know how you guys can do it, but we need to visit that because it is, there are seventy-two of them. The only ones that affect us are the ones that are on the border of Cupertino and San Jose. Casa and all of its horrendous elements. As I said, Casa Estamos Mal. I'm sorry, I don't have my verb. To me, it is a bunch of people who are taking the sacraments of Sacramento and turning them into something where they are deciding what the rest of the residents of the state, who have not had a chance to vote on this, they're trying to take our property away. And I'm getting very worried about this. We need to look at how this is affecting the rest of the state. Is this going to happen to Oregon and Washington State? I'm very concerned about this. We need to vote on it, but I'd say.
Hey, thank you, Jennifer.
To Casa Estamos Mal.
Okay, next is Janet Van Zorin, and that's, I have no more cards. If anyone else wanted to speak, we missed it, please fill out a card now. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, from the City Council members. I'm here once again to ask that finding housing for people with developmental disabilities is very important. I know you've heard me say this a million times. But what's also very important to making it happen is to not forget to include it in your lists and in your study sessions and whatnot. When that term for people with developmental disabilities or with preference for people with developmental disabilities, when that terminology gets left off, we fall through the cracks. It happens time and time and time again, not just here in Cupertino, but with all kinds of things. That's also one reason why it's so extremely, extremely difficult to get funding for housing for people with developmental disabilities. So I just ask you to do one thing. Don't forget to include us. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And that's all the cards I have, so we can bring it back to council. So we do have the proposed work program here. We all have copies of it, as well as the items from Planning Commission, yes?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would note that there are two items related to the Valco site on the work program. And the Vice Mayor, out of an abundance of caution, is recusing herself from participating in decisions related to the Valco site pending an FPPC decision based on the location of her residence. So I would just point out that on page five of the work program, there's an item regarding the Performing Arts Center from the Valco specific plan. And on the Planning Commission, item fourteen is regarding study sessions on Valco hearings. So if the council wishes to participate in those, or to discuss those items, I suggest moving them to the end, when the Vice Mayor may recuse herself. And if there's any other conflicts that council members are aware of, we could move those to the end also. Otherwise, feel free to discuss other items.
Was there anything on here about Regnart Creek Trail? Because I would need to recuse myself from that.
No, I don't believe there is. I think that that is all on the CIP, so.
If we talk about City Hall or library expansion, do you need to recuse yourself? Because you're close.
Oh, that'd be a good question for the city attorney, since I do live within five hundred feet of both the library and City Hall.
Probably be the conservative approach then.
Okay. Okay, so we have a long list here.
Actually, if I forgot my note in the office, maybe, would you like, would you guys like to talk about the two Valco items first? I'll go get my notes for the other items.
No, let's just start. You can get the notes. Wait, you have notes on this, you mean?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Brian will go get them for you, or do you know where they are?
Yeah, just tell.
I don't know, it's like in my bag, so.
Okay. All right, sure. Okay, let's go to item fourteen on the, what the Planning Commission came up with last night. This is Study Sessions on Valco Hearings and Project Status. So is there any staff input on this? I think we, you know, we did talk about this at the goal setting, how we should have some kind of community input on what people would like to see at Valco, and it should be run by the city and the city only.
So, yeah, so there isn't anything currently on the work program? So if the council wants to put something on there that would bring back, you know, potentially would bring in a planning consultant, put together a plan on our own, then that's something that you could include.
So do we not have someone on our planning staff that can do this? I mean, why do we need another consultant?
Well, I mean, I guess it depends on what the scope of that is. I mean, if we're talking about doing the same type of work that was included for the current specific plan, then that would be a larger effort than would be able to do within House Resources.
Okay, yeah, I don't know what other people here had in mind. I was thinking of community meetings run by our staff to get input from community members about what they would like to see on that site. Because we, you know, we ran that, the charrette, but that was really, we ended up with a lot of input, not from community members, and it was really driven by what was in SB thirty-five, more than an open-ended of what we really want to see there.
Okay, so then potentially, here, I mean, just as an idea, what we could talk about as an initial work program item is to scope out what the, you know, bring back to council a proposal on what staff could do, and that would be the work program item. Come back to council with a proposal on what staff could present in the community outreach that could be done to achieve what you just mentioned.
Okay. Any other input on that item, Darcy?
Well, trying to parse this out from the rest of the eighteen items that Planning Commission put forth in front of us. I think maybe the more basic question is to ask how we feel as a council about the placement of the item as number fourteen out of eighteen, with the idea that when Vice Mayor Chow returns, we could potentially be talking about those other seventeen items as well. Personally, I'm okay with where it sits. You know, I think that looking at the other items here that fall above it, one through thirteen, they make sense in terms of the importance and urgency of the items. And on the opposite end, the four items that fall below it seem to be pretty well-placed as well. So I would propose that we, you know, at least talk about the placement within the prioritization. I think that the more basic question of whether we're going to adopt the Planning Commission's recommendations is probably one more fitting for, including Vice Mayor Chow and Councilmember Willie, if he arrives during the study session. And then similarly, with regard to the Housing Commission recommendations, we can probably, you know, discuss those at the same time as when the other council members are back.
So I just note quickly, looking at Planning Commission's ideas, as well as Housing Commission's, quite a few of those are included within the scope of the City Council's proposed work program. And then there are some items that the Commissions really could do on their own without a great deal of city resources and would not need to necessarily be on the council's work program, but could be on the Commissions. What you could do tonight is, so, you know, there may be some items on there that you would choose to have on the council's work program. And you could direct us to come back with, including those for April second. We could fold those in. Right now, the proposed work plan, I mean, we, I would say that that is, that's our resources. The city's resources have been applied. If you add things on, there probably would be some impacts to others potentially falling off. But that would be the direction. If you found things on the Planning Commission's or the Housing Commission's or had your own ideas tonight, then you could direct us to come back with those included on April second.
Okay, I mean, the reason that number fourteen stands out to me is that that's probably the number-one topic we get asked about in the city, is Valco. Whether it's, you know, whether it's not the highest priority in the work plan is one thing, but it is of intense interest in the community. So by that token, I think it deserves to be included in the work plan.
I mean, I thought what we were going to do was go through what staff had prepared, which is structured. A lot of these things, including Valco, right, are in here. But what I might suggest is if we go through these section by section, and we see things from these other inputs that we have that we'd like to add in these sections, we could do that.
Right, we'll do that, but we just wanted to do these Valco things first while Leon's out of the room.
Yeah, fair enough. So Valco is under.
Under community livability.
Right.
Well, you know, the other one was discussing the Performing Arts Center. I guess that's related because in Tier Two, they were going to, Santill was going to fund the Shell.
Right.
So.
So that item is shown as on hold. I mean, we can talk about it, but that is proposed.
Right, yeah, there's no reason to really to move forward on that. So I think if council.
I agree that we keep it on hold, you know, as long as the status is unclear. We really don't have any basis to proceed at this point. We would be spending our city's dollars without that source of revenue being provided, so.
Right, and it's probably pretty far down on the capital improvement priority list as well. Okay, so Vice Mayor Chow, you can re-enter. And I think I see... Councilmember Willie is here now. Welcome. Okay, so Tim, do you want to go through this item by item now?
I can do that.
Okay.
I can do that, and then I'll go quickly, and you just stop me if there's any questions on the scope or.
Right, yeah.
Maybe, I mean, even section by section, assuming we've read this. We don't need to go through each one of these. We have, what, forty-five minutes? Well, I guess an hour to our regular council meeting.
Right, but we will stop at six fifteen. Remember, this is also on the agenda for the regular council meeting to continue.
Oh, I see, okay.
So we'll stop at six fifteen for thirty minutes, and then come back. Yeah, so you can go through this quickly, and then council members can interrupt if they have a question.
Yeah, and I'll just note that we do have our department heads here that if there's any questions on the scope of these items, we can fill that in. Okay, so Smart City, we have the Wireless Master Plan, municipal water system, wireless upgrade public space, the 5G Smart City initiative, and then the Public Safety Surveillance Support. So any questions, or you'd like me to stop there?
Yes, a question with regard to when you designate in the first column an item as a priority-setting item. So does that mean that it's, if it's the first item that shows up as a priority-setting item by row, is that the highest priority-setting item under that particular?
That means it's basically a new item, that we heard from you for the first time back in February at the priority-setting session. So we have folded that in with the existing ongoing items.
Right, and so, just hypothetically, because Smart City only has six items, but if there was a seventh item, and that also said priority-setting item, would that have been considered a lower priority setting than number six? Or are they just kind of randomly?
No, so you can look at the, I mean, we put schedules to all these, but no, they're not chronologically in priority in this program.
I see.
If they're in the program, we're saying that we are getting to them, and we've applied an estimated schedule to that.
I see.
So all of these assume there's sufficient staff hours?
That's correct.
Okay.
Although, you know, some of them are on hold, but yes, the ones that say that they have a timeline, we're saying that we can get to those.
Okay.
And so the input that you want from us is not so much how to prioritize it vis-à-vis the other priority-setting items, but perhaps the specific details as to the timeline, or whether something is on hold, or other details with regard to approaching that particular item.
That's correct. And we've broadly put timelines to these, usually by the quarter. Instead of quarter, we call it the season. But if we're saying that we're going to work on something based on resources in the fall, and you said, no, that's not soon enough, then that would be input, and we may look at what it would take with other items to move that one forward.
Okay, I see. All right, thanks for the clarification on that.
Let me see if I understand. So these five items under Smart City, basically, they have the same priority. And what we are actually looking, we should be looking at is the completion date. If any of the completion date we want to move up, we should speak up. Otherwise, the staff would be treating all of them with the same priority.
Yeah, so. Yeah, this, yeah, so, uh, that is correct. These are not prioritized. If they've made it into this proposal, we're saying that we're gonna do it. We've, we've applied what we estimate the schedule to be based on, you know, what, what, what we're thinking our resource availability will be.
But wouldn't you be, like, this is for the next year, right? Would you, it doesn't say start date, so are you starting everything from day one, or it will be, some will be emphasis for the first half of the year, some will be for the second half of the year?
That's correct. Some, some of them do have, have when we'll begin the work, but, but yeah, they typically would, the work program would become effective July first. There are a few things in here, I'll tell you, that we, that we are getting a head start on. I mean, we have, we have resources available, there, there, there are things that are, are current and are urgent, so we are moving some of them forward.
Right, I see in progress on the first four items already, so...
Well, those are, those are in your current work program. I'm just, I'm just saying that...
And it's carrying over to the next year?
Even new items, there are some that we've already begun work on.
Hmm, I guess I'm trying to understand, looking at the table, how do I know which item is, uh, will get started, uh, the first half of, of the year, and which would be, like, a little later? And in case we might want a different priority?
Well, I think it would be in, in the next steps in the timeline column. That's rarely where, where you'd, you'd see what the, you know, what, what the different milestones are and when they are. So, so if, if there's a milestone in there that you think needs to be moved up or moved back, um, then, then that would be, those are really the two columns that would tell you when we were intending to get to certain portions of that.
All right, so on this list, the last one about the surveillance, it's got four different times for the timeline, so, and it says proposed, so can you explain the timeline there? Are we ready?
Yeah, I'll ask Bill Mitchell to...
Okay.
...take that one.
And this is like cameras around the city for, um, crime-related things, right?
So, Mayor Sharf, Bill Mitchell, uh, Chief Technology Officer for the city. So, that's partly correct. Another one is to partner with the, uh, city businesses to talk about implementing a plan to work with the sheriff's office to provide video footage in the event that, um, you know, police require video evidence. Uh, so it's that portion, as well as talking to city businesses about best practices for video. And to answer your first question, why is there a scale on the, the timeline? If you look at the next chart, if it's proposed and there's a budget attached to that as well, if it's approved in the budget, then we'll move forward. If it's not approved in the budget, we won't move forward. So the proposed says, these are the steps we'll follow, right? So do you...
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, and the other thing that I was, saw recently was, for residential cameras, there's now some apps that let you, that let neighbors kind of combine all their residential footage, similar to what the businesses are doing. Now, I don't know if that's cross-platform, or if you can't combine a ring with, uh, um, some other, um...
Yeah, unfortunately, right now, the video, um, there's multiple formats for that, so trying to merge all those together is a little bit difficult. Uh, but the sheriff just likes to take all that information in, and they, even if they have to look at one video at a time, that's what their preference is.
Okay, very good, thank you.
So, in terms of the budget, it's fifty thousand dollars. You are thinking that maybe, like, it's for, right now, we are looking at the study, right? We're not purchasing any equipment.
Well, remember, there's two phases to this, as the mayor stated. Uh, there's phase, one, one phase is actually doing surveillance around the city facilities itself. That will require the procurement of cameras and the software to drive those cameras. So that's where the fifty thousand dollar budget comes in.
That would include the equipment for city properties?
Yes, but, to be fair, this is a multiple-phased project, multi-year, so that first fifty thousand dollars is about sixteen to twenty cameras, that's it.
Okay, is some of this dependent on the deployment of 5G?
Uh, this is not, not at this time. For city facility cameras, we would not be putting them on 5Gs for a couple of reasons. One is the technology is not there quite yet. Second, there's, uh, protection and privacy concerns.
Right.
Right? Um, but more importantly, for the city, our retention is required, and we wanna make sure that, that all stays in-house.
Okay, good, good idea.
So, for businesses and residences or neighborhood, would we be looking into maybe giving them guidance, maybe the whole neighborhood using the same brand of camera, then they're my, we might compose image? There might be a technology for that, we could say, recommend that?
So, Vice Mayor Chow, that, that is a possibility. Again, we're gonna be working with the sheriff's office. They're really gonna be taking the lead in this, cause neighbors and businesses are gonna take more direction from, you know, the sheriff's office, because they actually see that reverse relationship very closely there. Uh, so, we'll be working with the sheriff's office to find those issues. And the sheriff will be the ones with us that will coordinate, you know, what are best practices.
All right, thank you. Can we, I think we need to move on, or we'll be here till tomorrow. Okay, Tim?
Okay.
All right, so now we're on livability, okay?
Yeah, community livability, um, and so incentives to build, um, accessory dwelling units, update the municipal code to provide parking incentives for EVs and encourage outdoor seating in restaurants, uh, the lawn buster drought-tolerant, uh, planting pilot, Healthy Cities Initiative, develop access to water policies for city facilities and parks, uh, and, uh, the shuttle bus service study, shuttle bus pilot program implementation, penalties for violation of conditions of approval and code enforcement best practices.
Uh, can we...
Sure.
Um, so for the first page, the ADU, I thought it was, it already passed through the Housing Commission and Planning Commission. How come there is a delay that it won't be coming to the city council until winter of two thousand nineteen?
I'll ask, uh, Ben Foo to take that one.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Um, Ben Foo, Inter-Director of Community Development. So, for this particular item, we, there are a number of, um, initiatives that are coming through the state. So, in, uh, working with the city attorney's office, we're waiting to see how far that's gotten before we come back for, for more updates, uh, so that we can do one major cleanup as opposed to sort of segmented, uh, cleanup efforts.
Oh, so the, the previous version didn't include maybe those bills passed in, in two thousand eighteen?
It did. Previous, the previous update included everything that was updated, correct, but there is more that is coming along. I believe there's seven more now.
From where?
From the, from the state, so...
Wait, the governor signed new bills on, in September of two thousand eighteen, right? Those are included in the, in the version that you had earlier?
Correct.
Then one more came after?
What we're hearing is that...
We haven't approved ADU bills since the, since the governor signed off on the bills in the fall of twenty eighteen. You're talking about the ones in twenty seventeen, right?
What I'm, what I'm saying, there, there are new ones that are potentially coming down the line, so what we're working on with the city attorney's office is trying to figure where those are lined up, so we can bring a complete package to you, um, for that.
New ones, you mean the two thousand nineteen bills that may or may not get...
Correct.
...approved?
Correct.
So we are waiting for those, then?
Correct.
Why do we... Shouldn't we first have a version that comply with the two thousand eighteen bills? When the two thousand nineteen passed, then it will be like in September thirtieth, right? When the governor signs it, or not?
Yeah, so everything that was approved and effective at January first, two thousand nineteen had already been implemented in the last round that we came forward with.
So why can't we just approve that?
It's been approved already.
It's already been approved.
It's already been approved.
But this goal...
By the council? It hasn't come to the council, as I understand.
Last year it did.
Yeah, before you were on council.
Okay.
About a year ago, right?
Yes.
Right, so the goal for incentives, so this recommended goal, would this go beyond what is required by any legislation, or is this just to comply with the legislation?
Potentially. We're looking at, at the very minimum, meeting the legislations, and then also in discussion whether that should go beyond that or not.
Okay, very good.
Wait, but then I remember the Housing Commission has an ADU resolution on their agenda in January, right, this year? That was not the version the council approved last year?
Uh, I'm not sure. I'll have to go back and check on which one you're referring to.
Okay, so the, we already have, our ordinance already comply with the two thousand eighteen bills?
Correct.
Okay, good.
Right, so this would kind of jive with, um, one of the items on the Housing Commission work plan about reviewing the ADU ordinance. Um, and I believe there's already no require, isn't there already no requirement for parking for ADUs? I thought that was one of the state requirements, was that you couldn't require parking?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
And do we allow junior ADUs, attached ADUs?
Do we allow junior ADUs attached to regular ADUs? I don't believe so, no.
I think the state, some bills allow you to turn one bedroom with the, um, exterior opening and turn that into its own unit.
So right now, we, we allow one ADU unit, um, per property?
And, but it can be attached, right?
Yes.
Right, it can be attached or detached.
Correct, it can be attached or detached.
But you can't have another ADU attached to the detached ADU?
Correct.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Uh, when we talked about this, and I'm thinking it was about a year ago, because we had to conform with state laws, not passed in twenty eighteen, but twenty seventeen, as I recall.
Yeah.
So, you know, I don't, Wacowski is the main author of these things. His bill failed in twenty eighteen, so I'm not sure there are any applicable new laws in twenty eighteen, just to clear the record up. If, if I'm wrong, please correct me.
So, so you're correct, that, that did fail, so that was not included. So what I'm saying is everything that's applicable...
That passed in twenty seventeen, we conformed to about a year ago, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so...
And we're up to date.
So the request from this, the prior council was to have the Housing Commission look at whether we ought to provide some additional incentives for ADU production. For example, and I've heard this now from, uh, folks that are trying to build units for teachers and others, whether we ought to offer some rebate on or excuse on park fees, for example, uh, if property owners would be willing to build for, uh, the missing middle, for teachers and government employees and that sort of thing. That was a request from a year ago, and now you're saying that you wanna wait another year because maybe there's another ADU bill. So I, uh, think we really ought to talk about, uh, whether we're serious, uh, whether this council, this is a new council, they have a right to decide what they wanna decide, but I think we ought to talk about whether we want to try to, uh, pursue this idea of incenting ADU production.
Sure, if, if, if council wishes to move forward, we certainly can do that.
I would support that.
And not wait for another year, thinking, gosh, maybe the legislature...
Yeah, this has nothing to do with regulation. This has to do with how do we make it, how do we help more people to be able to build ADU, including maybe, maybe funding. I think I was talking to Silicon Valley Housing Trust. They could help provide funding to fund ADUs for, um, if, if, for especially housing people with, uh, um, low income or disability, and, or even just moderate housing. Uh, actually, yeah, their package is, is basically designed for moderate-income housing, yeah. So they have a pilot program to provide funding for that. We can look into that without, uh, this is two separate thing.
And the idea of...
Different regulation.
Offering some concession, right, on, on some of our, our park fees are gigantic for these things. I forget, it was twenty-five grand or something, but, you know, offering some concession in exchange for a deed restriction, right? Uh, that might say for the first ten years, you know, this unit shall be offered to an employee, somebody in these classifications. And, you know, what we've done with our BMR housing program, right, is specifically looked at how we would incent and, and, uh, and allow, for example, teachers, government employees, which are predominantly teachers in this area, to, to have an opportunity to, um, live in our community.
Sure, and I think part of exercise too is also look at what the neighboring cities have done for this particular...
Yeah.
...item, so we'll make sure we're consistent with that.
And I think...
Maybe, maybe not.
Maybe not, right, correct.
If we start waiving fees, we have to figure out how we're gonna backfill the lost revenue, because, you know, we're still gonna need parks for the people that live there, even if we waive the park fees.
So I'm thinking maybe like delayed fees, because if they are building that to become a market rate rental, they will have income later. Then maybe we could delay when they have income.
We don't have to decide this whole thing right now, though. We're just, it's just on the work program.
Right, but I, and I think that's good feedback, so what we can do, um, coming back on April second, we can look at what it would take to move that up, and then potentially the, the first item being a study session where we could get some, some direction from the city council.
I, I would propose that we split this into two items. One is, uh, as it stands, um, looking forward to the regulations, and then the second one will be the incentives or funding assistance for ADUs, right? So that's separate.
Yeah, I agree. So, we're not dependent on the state taking action for us to do something?
All right, let, let's move forward. We spent a lot of time on this one.
Okay.
Um, so I think, where were you, where were, did you stop before?
Um, so I'd like to get, get attention to item number four. Basically, um, it's, it's, I guess it's continued from last year. It's about revises, revised the tobacco policies. We recently received a request from Fremont Union High School Board Members to consider possible, um, banning of flavored or e-cigarette in near schools, so that might be considered as part of this.
I'll ask Katie to address that one.
Good evening, Mayor and Honorable Councilmembers. Katie Nomura, Senior Management Analyst. And so we did receive that letter, and we are actively working with the county. Uh, they're doing a, kind of a, working with all the cities to try and work on some tobacco-free community policies, and, um, what their request was fits right in line with that, so that will be part of this initiative.
So, I'm curious, because this was continued from last year, so what was the progress from last year?
So last year, we engaged in the grant process with the county and, and was awarded the grant, and so now we will begin the work this year.
Oh, that's cool.
Okay, great, yeah, if they're providing the money that, for this, that's great. I don't know if, um, this is something...
Yeah.
On that note, um, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, give this to the city clerk. It's the letter from the Fremont Union High School District, uh, so that it becomes part of our record and, and tied to this particular item. Um, Vice Mayor Chow, just to let you know, when you put an item on, on your screen, it creates a lot of marks on the, uh...
Sorry.
Oh, that's where all the marks are coming from, okay.
So, one more note, in terms of the completion date of this item, it, it says right now, December twenty, twenty. I'm wondering, can we move that up?
So it's likely that, uh, it could be completed earlier than that. This is the timeline that was negotiated in the grant agreement, um, but it can, it's, this is full implementation, so it's not only writing the policy, uh, passing the ordinance, but also implementation of that ordinance. There's a lot of outreach involved. Um, we'll have a better idea of a final completion date as the year progresses, and we see how far that, uh, the initiative goes.
Right, and I think businesses would probably oppose this if they're near, you know, they would just oppose being restricted on what they can sell in general, since they already can't be sold to minors anyway.
Well, I'll say that I'm very supportive of this too. I was impressed with the letter. I didn't understand the degree. It was a problem here, although I, you know, reading the news, I understand it's an issue nationwide, but I think, uh, we ought to do what we can to keep our high school kids from smoking, vaping, and right, our tobacco ordinance is also cover e-cigarettes, but, um, um, I think there's probably good reason for us to think carefully about FUHSD's request to us.
So, uh, I guess I don't know much about the e-cigarettes and all, but are those sold to minors now, or how does that work? Or are they restricted? At what age can you purchase e-cigarettes? I have no idea.
Well, part of the examination will probably be, uh, a look into what the regulations are on the state and county level, as well as in ordinance, and also if the, um, prescriptions are already there, maybe it's a matter of talking about how we can better enforce those requirements, and perhaps even put a more stringent fine, uh, structure.
I, maybe I can add that. The, the school board member's request is specifically within five hundred feet of schools. There should be no selling of, uh, e-cigarette. The reason is seven eleven often is within, close to our high school, and they have a big counter of cigarettes, and they have biggest promotion signs out... and they have a big counter of cigarettes, and they have big promotion signs out there. Even though they might not be able to purchase without ID showing they are eighteen years or older, but then they walk by every day, so that's why they are concerned that they would like that. Within five hundred feet, there should be no sale. And for the information, surprisingly, San Francisco last year passed a ballot major to ban flavored tobacco. San Francisco, that's, yeah. So I have a question about the fifth item on the same page. That says that we would like to add water facility on the parks?
Yeah, bottle filling stations.
I actually didn't see that in the Park Master Plan.
So this is to develop a policy so that when there is a capital improvement project or infrastructure project at a park, or at one of our facilities, that we ensure that we have bottle filling stations built into that plan?
Right, that's a great idea.
But then here, we are only considering two locations, I think Joliman Park and...
Those are just places that have been completed to date. We've also had some put in at Quinlan Community Center. This is just our progress.
It seems this should be integrated into the Park Master Plan, right?
Well, it's broader than, it's broader than that, it could be at any of our...
Right, it could be not, not just parks.
I think we'd incorporate it into our standards, whenever we're, we're doing anything at a facility where we're touching a drinking fountain, it's going to be a water filling station that goes back in. So just to make that our standard.
A couple of years ago, the county had grant money, they were basic, they were installing these things in some cities. We weren't ready, we weren't prepared, we didn't file for the grant, and we missed the opportunity to get fully funded. There's some thought that the county might take action again if we're queued up to receive that, respond to that grant in a timely manner.
These are not extraordinarily expensive things anyway, right?
No, they're not.
All right, why don't, why don't we continue?
I just want to make a comment on the drought-tolerant plotting, planting plan. I know it's hard to think about this in a really wet year as we've had, but I'm a big proponent of doing what we can do, you know, in those years where there's not so much demand for landscaping services as there are in these dry years. So if we could get a plan together to convert all the lawns we have, right? Some, at least offer a program with some incentives. I would like to see this, this move forward. I know it's always a challenge to get contractors on board, but I think it would serve our residents well if we could offer some standardized re-landscaping programs for, that would, would give us fewer lawns and more drought-tolerant landscapes around residential, residential homes.
Thank you, and I just note that this, this item, the lawn buster drought-tolerant planting pilot, it would be basically people signing up for a turnkey project, where the, it is designed, you know, basically a standard design and, and constructed. We will still be, we'll pursue this, but we are still continuing our rebate program that we attached to the water district's rebate program, and that's administered by them.
So I, I actually have been wondering, the drought, yeah, we want to have more drought-tolerant plant, but the kind of plant we have chosen, they are ugly. I've seen much prettier plants near, near seashores in Carmel. There are drought-tolerant plants that are prettier. I wonder if we can look into more options that, yeah?
We've been working with a palette that is prescribed by the water district in their program, so we've really just been attaching ourselves to their program. They use native and drought-tolerant plants. And, you know, I think the, the planting around City Hall is, that was meant to be an example of what people could, could look at as well. We will have signage that's going out there, interpretive signage, that may assist people in making some selections in the near future.
On that item, it seems there, there is a wording omission under performance goal. You probably mean to say that you'll receive at least two to three responses with the word "least" omitted.
Yes, correct. Thank you.
Seems like we're at six fifteen, Mayor Scharf.
That's true. Okay, yeah, let's take a break and reconvene at six forty-five then.